I'd like to welcome the candidates. We do have candidates from wards one, two, and four here today. Wards three and five are not contested elections, so therefore it would not be appropriate to have them on the panel per the league rules. So I'm going to ask each candidate to stand up. Please tell us which ward you hope to represent and give your one-minute opening statements. Candidate Bridges.
Hello. My name is Jessica Bridges. I am a candidate for St. Charles City Council, Ward one. I am the mother of two wonderful children, a wife to a very supportive husband, and I work professionally as a scientist. In my career as a scientist, I started out as a laboratory technician and worked my way up to laboratory manager. I test municipal drinking waters, wastewater, soils, and products. Currently in my job, I travel to various laboratories in the area, and I assist them with their scientific experiments, their protocols, and ensure regulatory compliance. I am running for a city council because we have found ourselves divided on the best path forward for the redevelopment of our police department, and I would like to push for community input first and foremost on that redevelopment. We also have a ton of abandoned buildings throughout our town, and we need to redevelop those and bring in new businesses, as well as starter homes. And a lot of families are struggling with the continuing increase in prices, so we need to do everything we can to keep our taxes low. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Luntke, your opening statement.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mark Voges, and I'm running for city council here in Ward one in St. Charles. I am a lifelong St. Charles resident, born and raised here, third generation here in St. Charles, a St. Charles High School graduate as well. I'm employed by Community Unit School District 303 here at St. Charles. I'm a teacher at Redling. I've done that for 23 years. And I'm running for city council because I feel like I'm an agent for change. I feel like I'm somebody who is solution-based and ready to solve some of our tougher problems. I want to see St. Charles continue to be a wonderful community for families to come and raise their families, send them to terrific schools, and enjoy all of our parks and amenities that our town has to offer. I also want to continue the work that my grandfather did as an alderman in Ward for over 20 years. I find it an honor to be on city council and to serve here the residents of St. Charles. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Candidate Calante.
Yes, I'm Tom Malanti. I'm also looking to represent Ward one. I'm an 11-year resident. I'm a commissioner on the City of St. Charles Natural Resources Commission for the past four years, and I'm an Eastside advocate for fiscal responsibility, for smart and responsible development, for community input especially, for upgrading our infrastructure, both our streets, our water, for a river that's clean and accessible, and for government transparency. And whether you support me or one of our fellow candidates up here, please make sure to get out and vote on April 4th, and thank you, legal voter, Central King County.
Candidate Luntke, your opening statement.
Hello. My name is Art Limkey, and I represent, or would represent, Ward two. I'm the candidate for Ward two, one of the two of us. And I've been a resident in St. Charles since '91. My wife and son and I have moved here in '91. My son is a graduate of the St. Charles High School project. I already have 20 years in city council, and I am a CPA right now and a government auditor. And what I do in all the organizations where I audit is I find opportunities for improvement, and I always get agreement from those who receive my reports. Their responses are included, and I'm doing this because I like the City of St. Charles because I care. Now, one other thing that I would say is, not only do I always get agreement, but I bring a cross-section. I have a cross-section of people that I talk to and work with in my government positions.
Thank you so much. Candidate Muns.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Muns. I am looking to represent Ward two on city council. St. Charles has been my home for the last 18 years with my husband and my two children. I've been an active volunteer in our community for the past 18 years with many different organizations. I sit on several different boards here, and I am a city commissioner on the St. Charles Youth Commission. I bring with me 22 years of business experience in human resources with a comprehensive understanding of policy and budgets. I'm both compassionate and practical in my decision-making. Some of my goals are to encourage strategically planned, responsible development in our eastern corridor and our downtown, to be an effective communicator who listens to residents and encourages and engages with people in our community, and to provide open and transparent representation within our community. I hope to serve St. Charles and the people in our community. Thank you.
Candidate Muntz, your one-minute opening statement.
Hi. My name is Laurel Muntz. I'm an 18-year resident. I'm not sure it's working. Maybe you can borrow a candid one. Okay? Thank you. Is it on? It is. Hi, I am Laurel Muntz, and actually, I'm a 19-year resident. You did hold closer. Oh, closer? Yeah. Now we'll have to start again. Okay, once more. My name is Laurel Muntz, and I'm a 19-year resident of St. Charles. In 2015, my husband passed away. I became a widow, and it propelled me into getting involved in the community. And it started with putting a bench on the river in his memory, and that got me involved with the River Corridor Foundation. And eight years since, today, I'm the president of that organization. And we have done more to protect the riverfront and create access and amenities than anyone, including my opponent. We do the real work. I'm a member of the Plan Commission, and I understand how development takes place in St. Charles. I understand that the plans that come as a concept before the commission rarely end up being built the way that they start. It's an iterative process with multiple stakeholders providing us with feedback, and thank you.
Candidate Patrilla.
Thank you to the league for hosting this event. I'm Dave Patrilla. I'm the current fourth Ward council member, 28-year resident of the city, graduate of St. Charles High School. I too was a Plan Commissioner, several other commissions as well. I'm running again because I'd like to continue the work that I've been conducting, being responsive, representing my constituency, being an independent voice on the city council. I think I have a proven record of being independent and thoughtful when it comes to our development, and which has been a very important topic, especially in the fourth board over the last year or so. So I do ask for your support and look forward to serving the fourth board for another four years.
Thank you. The first question is going to begin with candidate Voges. We received a multitude of questions on this very topic that I'm going to ask. What initiatives do you support to bring resolution to the mall property, Pheasant Run, and the police property? One minute.
But it's funny, I don't think anybody's talked about those. I think the best thing we can do with those three initiatives when we look to move forward with these. Number one, we've got to do what's best for the city. We've got to look at what's going to be best for the residents. We've got to look at what's going to be best for what's going in there. So what I look for is, with the developers, whether they come from the Charlestown Mall, whether they're coming into the Pheasant Run or coming into the police station, is this a plan that the community is going to support? Is this a plan that the community can get behind and look at and say, yes, this is best for St. Charles not only five years from now, but 10 years from now or even 20 years from now? And if we can look at the plans that are coming from those developers, it's going to be our job as a city council then to sit down and make sure we're making a best decision as a group, but also hearing from the members of our community and our ward. So there's a lot that needs to be done with those areas. We know that, but we also should be taking our time and making sure those best decisions are going forward to continue to support the residents of St. Charles and making sure we're getting proper revenue from those places. Thank you.
Candidate Calante. What initiatives do you support to bring resolution to the mall property, the Pheasant Run, and the police property?
Just those three. Well, for the mall, I believe that we're looking at the possible mixed use, and if the developers feel that that would be a good one, we could take that to the community. I'm sure the community would support housing. If we have some affordable housing, I'd like that to be part of the inside of that community. In terms of Pheasant Run, it'd be interesting to see if any of the developers coming in would be able to use the tower or not. And then in terms of the police station, I would support a public amenity, more like perhaps an amphitheater, perhaps some boat slips for visitors, and keeping it accessible to the public.
Thank you. Candidate Limkey.
If elected, I would continue to work on the Pheasant Run redevelopment. We've already made strides with automotive and warehousing, and it's just the park that's along Main Street, which is visible for retail, and particularly that theater and maybe the tall former hotel building. In Charlestown Mall, we've had several proposals that include residential toward the north. We had a couple of proposals that were so intense that they affected the parking for the existing businesses, the theater of Cooper's Hawk. And likewise, with the downtown, the police station redevelopment, we need to develop that footprint, and we're talking about things like parking, traffic, river access, and not affecting the utilities that are existing in that area, the electric and the water utilities that are relevant to, that supply the whole city. And replacing those might be very expensive, disproportionate.
Thank you. Candidate Muns.
Thank you. I believe that with the police department site, it's very important to remember that that area is going to be something that shapes the future of this community for the next 50 years, really. So it's very important that we understand what it is that we're putting there and what it's going to do for the landscape of the community. So really knowing what we have as far as the geological studies that come back, seeing what it is that we're able to build there is important, but also understanding what the community really wants to have there is important. The redevelopment of the whole eastern corridor is a really vital thing for our community's economic interests, so bringing in lots of community input for that is important. And deciding what we want to see in all of those sites as a community is important, rather than having developers come to us to tell us what they want to put there. Having the community decide what we want our community to be is important.
Thank you. Candidate Muntz.
Thank you. In regards to the police department property, I'm pleased that the city is doing an assessment of what's feasible there. I do think that when eventually a request for proposal is reissued, that we ensure that it includes very clear instructions around access to the river and what amenities we want to see there as a city. We don't have to give that whole, or sell that whole property or give it all away. I would envision it being some kind of mixed use with great public access. And in terms of the eastern corridor, I think to everyone's point, there's a lot of stakeholders at stake, and public info input is going to be very important. I believe that, again, mixed use will be the most effective use of both those properties. Pheasant One cannot be residential because of the airport. However, the Charlestown Mall certainly could be, and in all cases, we want to look to how can those, all three of those properties, provide economic development, economic engine for us.
And candidate Patrilla.
Well, I'm really pleased to hear that Voges are happy with the fact that the city sort of pumped the brakes and were actually conducting feasibility studies. That was a motion that I made and I initiated, so I appreciate that. But in general, for all three sites, it's just vitally important that thoughtful, discerning, you know, vetting of the sites occurs along with public input, because we have examples of where that didn't occur. And so the initiatives that I want to support is making sure that people are heard and that their ideas are incorporated. And to Jamie's point, I do agree with you as well. I think, especially the police department side, we own that property, so we should not, we should be really driving what goes there, not the developers. But working with them, of course, is important, but it's our property, so we should take the lead.
Candidate Bridges.
So the City of St. Charles did establish a TIF on Pheasant Run, so now actually the hard work does begin of making sure that we have profitable development there to repay the TIF so the taxpayers aren't paying for that. That needs to be coordinated in conjunction with this redevelopment of Charlestown Mall. We want to create a gateway to St. Charles so that when people enter from the east, they, when people enter from the east, they know what a great city they're entering in. As for the police department, community input is first and foremost the most important. We need to have everybody involved because it is our land as a public community, and we want to maintain that land for everybody's benefit. So I hope to insist on public forums and community input before we move any further and reach out to developers on that particular property. Thank you.
And candidate. The next question is going to begin with candidate Calante. Would you support an ordinance modification for riverfront property that would lower the maximum building heights to maintain the city's charm and our scenic views?
I would take community input from that and also expert input as to how low we would be willing to go. However, I would also like to, at the very least, keep to the maximum that we have, that we've established in ordinances, instead of having that maximum be there and then having a developer come in and then say that, well, okay, here's that maximum, but I'm also going to add a few things to the top of that. So I would support having that maximum.
Thank you. Candidate Limkey. Would you support an ordinance modification for riverfront property that would lower the maximum building heights to maintain the city's charm and our scenic views?
Depending on what developers might want to do with that, there is a case where you already have a building with Century Station that is about the size of the current maximum. As you look at the bulk of that building, it's probably most of it a 40 feet high, and just the fact that you have a flagpole or something like that doesn't mean that you ought to automatically increase a new development to 50 feet high. So it is worth considering. We certainly have the current ordinances, and any developer will at least answer those, but any developer that goes beyond that certainly is open to some question, and I wouldn't modify the ordinance to raise it.
Thank you. Candidate Muns.
Thank you. I would be open to any ordinance that would be something that the residents would be interested in. I would want to hear the community feedback about that, though, and understand if that's something that people in our community would want, if that's something that the businesses would support, and if it's something that would be helpful to people in the City of St. Charles. I think that just understanding what it is that people need is one of the most important parts of this job. So I can't pretend to know everything. I would need to know what it is that everybody wants and have an understanding from the city staff as to what that means from a development perspective and what that would leave us open to as far as development and developer needs as well.
And candidate Muntz.
Thank you. I think it depends on the location of the property. We have various open space or available space along the riverfront on both the east and the west sides of the river. Some are available, like the police station property now. Others are privately owned and not yet available. I would be supportive of listening and considering an ordinance depending on the specifics, and I also think it's contingent on what property and what we're assuming would go on that property.
Thank you. Candidate Patrilla.
You know, a very simple answer, actually. Yes, I would support that.
Candidate Bridges.
So this is a very important question. St. Charles as a city is growing massively, and we should be. We're a great place to live and raise a family. But this question asks, do we want to keep our small town the historic, walkable place that we all love to visit? And the answer to that is yes. As we continue to grow, we should be doing that on the outside of the city, near Charlestown, Pheasant Run, Ward ones and two out there, and keeping that small-town feel and that safe walkability that we have downtown. So thank you so much.
Candidate Voges.
Yes, I'd be supportive of something like that. I think we should be open really everything and anything at this point in time. I think anytime you can look at those policies and try to review them, that's always a positive. That's always a good thing. I love the idea of community involvement in this as well, but even more so expert involvement. You know, what do the experts think? When they see these buildings going up, what do they think? I think we run away from going sometimes to what experts think, and I think that's always something we could come back to. But in terms of reviewing it, absolutely, I think it's always something worth review to see if it's best for our city. Thank you.
Candidate Limkey. This question will start with you. Would you support an ethics bill to not allow developers to donate to council mayoral campaigns and then bid on city projects that will come before them for approval? So would you support an ethics bill to not allow developers to donate to city mayoral campaigns and then to bid on city projects that will come before the elected officials?
It is time for the city to review its ethics ordinances, particularly with respect to what the neighboring communities allow and what maybe King County would allow. And one of those would be at least a disclosure, but certainly one questions the amount of developer funds that could go into a campaign for the developer's candidate. That seems to me kind of odd, and the problem is that sometimes these types of donations can be made through third parties, so it becomes a little difficult to write an ordinance around that. But it's certainly, this ethics ordinance is due for review, and the city staff has to begin to help us determine what has worked in surrounding communities.
Candidate Muns.
I do support ethics ordinances, and I think that it is time for some more of those to be present in the City of St. Charles. I don't think that we've had a lot of reviews of those recently. In my current position, you know, for the past 22 years in human resources, I think that policies are important. They hold people accountable to things. So having that, having a review of those and seeing what we have in place, putting ourselves up against a bar of what other communities have is important, and I think that having disclosure to the public as to where things come from as far as donations, those are also important.
Candidate Muntz.
I'm not opposed to having an ethics ordinance that defines how we look at donations that come from anyone to a political candidate. I do think it's important for us to remember that the members of the city council also all primarily work full-time jobs and oftentimes have conflicting roles in their professional lives from their civic lives, and oftentimes have to recuse themselves from things. I think that it's worth reviewing. I agree that disclosure is important. I also agree that oftentimes it's important to look at what the surrounding communities are doing and collaborate with their policies so that there's consistency across the community.
And candidate Patrilla.
Yes, I'd absolutely support that. In fact, we actually had the opportunity recently to review our current ordinance, but city administration and the majority of the current council do not wish to pursue that, to my disappointment. And so, yes, absolutely, I would support that. I think we, you know, again, we have the opportunity to align with Geneva and Matavia, who have ordinances that actually go above and beyond the state requirement. We just subscribe to the state requirement at the moment, so, you know, again, given another opportunity to serve, I'm going to advocate for another review because I think we had a missed opportunity.
Candidate Bridges.
Yes, absolutely, I would support an ethics ordinance such as that one. I believe that developers most likely have more money than the average person living in St. Charles, and while the city council does have to work with developers, we are here to represent the people, not the developers. Thank you.
Candidate Voges.
Yes, this is something I would support as well. I think we've got to set ourselves across the board up to a higher standard so it doesn't look like we're being influenced by anybody or for anybody, that we can all be free individual thinkers when it comes to decisions and that outside influences were made on my behalf. So I would, this is something I would definitely support, and then hopefully St. Charles would take the lead on it to make sure that in the future, you know, situations like this don't come up again where they would be questioned.
Thank you. Candidate Calante.
Yes, I would support and champion that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Muns. What efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in the community?
I think affordable housing is a term that needs to really be defined, especially for the people in the community, because a lot of times you hear that term and people jump to particular conclusions as to what that means. So for the people in the community, it needs to be defined, and especially for the people on the council, it needs to be defined so that we can have very specific goals to work toward and decide what we want that to be. We should be reducing barriers that might exist for developers towards affordable housing, reducing barriers for people that might be trying to get to affordable housing, like maybe the existing loan programs that exist. We want seniors to be able to downsize and stay in town. We want young families to be able to move in town and raise their families here, begin to start their families. So we want to be able to have mixed-use development. Those things are a great way for both of those populations to be in affordable housing.
Thank you. Candidate Muntz, the same question.
St. Charles has an affordable housing ordinance, and so often developers pay a fee in lieu of providing affordable housing in their developments. I do believe that we have a need for affordable housing so that we can attract labor, for example, to work in our industrial area so that we can encourage young families to come back to St. Charles and raise their families here. I'm very supportive of having affordable housing in the community. It's also important that we have a place for our seniors.
Candidate Patrilla.
Yes, St. Charles actually is doing a really great job of promoting portable housing. We're one of three municipalities in the state who have an inclusionary housing ordinance. That does require a fee in lieu, and we've done, we have a record of supporting senior housing particularly, and I think, you know, general awareness, increased communication, and working with developers, letting them know that these, that our trust fund exists and that there's opportunities to promote affordable housing are, you know, there. I think, again, we're doing a fine job, and as a former housing commissioner, we, you know, I'm really proud of the fact that we are unique in Illinois for that, and so it's just a matter of continuing to create general awareness and work with the developers to utilize that trust fund.
Candidate Bridges.
So affordable housing, to me, it means quality starter homes. When my family first moved to this city, we moved into a quality starter home. Right now, we would not be able to afford that home or be able to afford to move here at all. So we are glad that we bought when we did, but we do need to address that issue, and I think it can be addressed with the mixed use behind, on Charlestown Mall site. I think that we can put affordable starter homes behind retail and restaurants lining Main Street, and that will encourage young families such as mine to continue to move to the city. Thank you.
Candidate Voges.
Yes, I think affordable housing is something that everybody wants for the city. I know my wife and I moved back here. We struggled to be, we wanted to be in the area so badly, and we struggled to find a place. We were lucky to find a wonderful home here to be able to raise our daughters, but it's something we have to do responsibly, and I say responsibly because our schools are getting drastically overcrowded at this point. And adding density and adding families in here without the increased capacity of adding an elementary or middle school is going to cause some problems. So I'm hoping that we, if we do get some affordable housing, if that's a route, if the Charlestown Mall decides to go, that it's done at a rate where we can still provide our children with a quality education and quality class size, because that is one of the reasons why people move to this wonderful town is for their schools, and we want to make sure that the kids, first and foremost, are getting that quality education as well. Thank you.
Candidate Calante.
Yes, this is a concern that was brought to me by my youngest daughter, 20-years-old, who's discussing about, some of her friends being concerned about whether they could stay in the community that they grew up in. So I believe that with any new development-
And we want to make sure that the kids, first and foremost, are getting that quality education as well. Thank you.
Candidate Galante.
Yes, this is a concern that was brought to me by my youngest daughter, 20-years-old, who was discussing about some of her friends being concerned about whether they could stay in the community that they grew up in. So I believe that with any new developments, we should advocate for the developers to include affordable housing to be integrated within those developments, as part of those developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Luntke.
Yes, we do have, we call it sometimes the attainable housing, affordable housing ordinance. It requires a couple of things, a couple of alternatives. Some affordable units or a fee in lieu that would be used for other. And one of the examples is rebuilding housing stock right in the surrounding area could be done with the fee in lieu. And that's what our housing commission works on. So, one, we have it. Two, on occasion, and we would keep it, but we also review it on occasion to see whether it's working appropriately or whether it's scaring off developers who could otherwise afford to build here. But if it adds several million to their development and they have to make it up through other housing, that's an issue that we've had to review because those developers have a choice of coming here or Geneva or Batavia. So we have to do market reviews periodically.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Muntz. How will you communicate and ensure the citizens of your ward are being represented in your council decisions if elected?
I think it's important that our constituents are well-informed and that they have the opportunity to know what's happening in the community. Also, I think it's important that as a council member, if that information is not completely accurate that's being discussed in the community, that as a council person, I ensure that I redirect that information so that my constituents understand what is being addressed in the council chambers and have an opportunity to speak about it.
Thank you. Candidate, excuse me, candidate Petrowa.
I will, I would just continue doing what I'm doing. I regularly meet with my constituents. I go to their homes. I canvass the neighborhoods. I encourage them to attend council meetings. And I too believe it's very important that my constituents are engaged with and know what's going on with the city. It's actually, you know, when there's no one in the council chambers, I, you know, it's kind of almost disappointing. And so I just continue to encourage my residents to come in and to speak. And there's, we really shouldn't be afraid of having residents be present and share their thoughts. And I think I have a really good track record of inviting and being open for their discussion. And I would just continue doing what I've been doing for the last seven years.
Candidate Bridges.
So we are so lucky in St. Charles to have such an active and friendly community. And it is difficult to keep in touch with the community and make sure that you're properly representing them. Social media, emails, canvassing the neighborhood, knocking on doors. I've actually spoke with people that would prefer I keep regularly knocking on their door to keep them informed. And thank goodness, they're my neighbors because I can absolutely do that. So, yeah, and I hope to have email lists, social media, and just always be accessible to the people to reach out to me. I make decisions when I have the most amount of information and viewpoints possible. So I, that's what I would do, is keep encouraging people to show up and keep reaching out and bothering them, just like I do my teenage son when he doesn't want to talk to me.
Candidate folks.
Yeah, I think communication is just key overall. The more you communicate with people, the more transparent you are, the better off things are. I notice that with the teachers, the more I communicate with the kids, the better results I get. The more I communicate with the parents, the less they're on my back. So the way I look at things here is through the use of social media, which has been great. I have a Facebook page, I have an Instagram page. This is the great thing about having teenage daughters, they know how to run it better than I do. So they've been helping me out a lot with that, posting things, and just letting the public know. The more we let the public know on things, the more they feel involved. And the more they feel involved in the decisions we make, the more trust they feel towards us. And that's what we have to build. We have to build trust. So the more we can open lines of communication, the better off we'll be. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Galante.
Yes, community input is absolutely paramount through the variety of means that everyone's been talking about here. I would do that. I myself walk my neighborhood at least twice a day, so speaking with a lot of people. And I also think that beyond that, for the community in general, I'd like to see that we put something on the city website, perhaps videos of the city council meetings, so that they can be accessible to our constituents, so that we can discuss those with them. And then would also encourage people to actually come to the city council meetings as well.
Thank you. Candidate Luntke.
Yes, I would definitely, I do definitely encourage neighbors. I walk the neighborhood when I don't have to. What's important is sometimes when people don't show up for local elections, I get out there and show them a sample palette and the number of candidates that might be relevant, school, park, library. So that's important. But answering emails and phones, I have a record of doing that, and sometimes one of these, all of a sudden, you get out there and you talk to folks and you realize that their streets are deteriorating. And that's why I've come out as saying, gee, it's time for us to continue to see if we can accelerate the street maintenance instead of just filling potholes. So definitely community involvement, walking and biking the streets and just knocking on doors, all very helpful.
Thank you. Candidate Muntz, your thoughts?
So I think that, you know, first of all, people are busy. We understand that. We do have our city meetings put onto YouTube. They are accessible through the city website. But I think we can do better in the 21st century. I think that we need to meet people where they are. Not everybody can come to a city meeting. Not everybody has time to be at those. And I think that I can be a community engager. I like to be around people and get them involved in things. I like to talk about things that are in the community. And I want to meet with residents. I want to champion more effective communication from the city and be engaged with people in my community. I like to get people involved in things. And I just think, you know, being more active in the community is really important.
The next question will begin with candidate Petrowa. The city of St. Charles' portion of property taxes increased the past two years in a row. What are your ideas to increase city revenue?
Well, I, you know, I have a record of opposing those, opposing the increase in those property taxes. So I think it's just very important to, as we continue to promote economic development throughout our community, that as we promote economic development, you know, it's been estimated that our sales tax is actually going to be going up. We actually just recently approved a home rule sales, a moderate home rule sales tax increase for our roads. So there are opportunities to be creative without putting additional burden on the residents through increased property taxes. I'm very proud of the fact that I voted no on those. But I'm also very proud that our commerce is increasing and we are actually estimating more sales tax revenue. But it's very important, again, I do not want to put more burden on the residents. And so as we continue to look for revenue, it has to, we have to look, we have to consider those opportunities, that plans.
Candidate Bridges.
And so I was very disappointed to find that St. Charles did increase those property taxes. They put a burden on already struggling families during already difficult times. I do look forward to getting creative and finding new ways to generate more revenue. But I believe that redevelopment for Charlestown and Pheasant Run and bringing in retail restaurants and the warehouses there will bring in a lot more money than these small sales tax increases that are hurting our families. Thank you.
Candidate folks.
Yeah, I think with the businesses that are starting to come in and the developments that are starting to come in, that is a definite help. I know anytime, no one likes to see taxes go up. That's, nobody does. But at the same time, we all want quality. And we want quality police, we want quality fire, we want quality teachers. And unfortunately, we have to pay for those things as long as we continue to want quality. That's how it's unfortunately got to work. But we can look and try to get a little bit more creative. We can look to try to engage with more businesses to get them here as well. Again, we know nobody likes seeing taxes go up. We know that. But at the same point, we don't want to do anything to lessen the quality of life that we have for our families in this area as well. Thank you.
Candidate Galante.
In terms of revenue, I would like to see a vibrant business community being the generator of additional revenue. And the more that we promote that community and the better that that community is able to perform, then the more revenue we get. We can also look at various efficiencies. We can look at, as they said, getting creative. Are there grants available, which we already pay into in terms of something coming from the state or federal government? Are there advantageous loan programs from a government entity such as state or federal that, again, we've already paid into? So those would be what I would look for in terms of revenue generators.
Candidate Luntke.
Yes, our, the city's portion of your property taxes is on the order of 11%. And one of the ways that we've kept that constant is because we take care of our employees. We don't have a lot of employee turnover. We do pay at the market, so that's a good idea. One of the increases we've seen in recent years is due to a fact that in the past, we have not funded pension as much as the pension should be funded. So we will increase our pension funding. And just like the road tax, which is a retail of a half a percent, that incidentally, other people who drive here and buy our goods share the increase in the sales tax, that's helpful in improving our status, our streets. And one of the other things that we tend to do is we try to hold the remainder portion of the property tax stable.
Thank you. Candidate Muntz.
So I think that, you know, increasing the city revenue is going to be done through some smart economic development. The Eastern Gateway is a great opportunity for that. We have a lot of space that has enormous potential with some creative solutions available. Working with developers for that opportunity is going to be really helpful, balancing commercial and retail opportunity to shoulder some of that burden and take that off of residents is going to be important. And we have a fairly new economic development director who has been out really helping to bring in some of those opportunities and court some of those developers to bring in some new retail opportunities and businesses who might not otherwise have been interested in St. Charles. And I think that utilizing those city staff and those professional experts are really important, getting them interested in St. Charles.
So St. Charles currently has, in an effort not to raise property tax, a 3% alcohol tax, a 2% gas tax, and we just raised our sales tax in the city by half a percent. So it's one and a half percent. So we have six and a half percent taxing of taxes to people that are visiting St. Charles and to our residents that are just doing business here. We can't keep doing that, or we'll stop being competitive in the marketplace. What we do need to do is be very strategic and responsible in developing the properties that are available to us. The police station property, for example, pays zero taxes. It's a government property at this time. Developing that property as well as Charlestown Mall and what remains of Pheasant Run will create much more revenue for the city and help us to make the pie bigger so that we have more discretionary funds to do the things we need to do.
Thank you. Candidate Bridges, this question will begin with you. The Fox Valley region has taken more steps to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. What additional efforts would you take to ensure that all members of the St. Charles community feel welcome and included?
Starter homes. We need to build quality starter homes. Listen, people, families like mine cannot afford to move here. Families like Tom Galante's children, they can't afford to continue living here. This is a great place to live. If we build these starter homes, we will be more welcoming and inclusive for everybody to come and join us here. Thank you.
Candidate folks.
Can you repeat that again?
The Fox Valley region has taken more steps to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. What additional efforts would you take to ensure that all members of the St. Charles community feel welcome and included?
Well, I think to make everybody feel welcome and included, we need to be wonderful listeners. We have to be listening to know the needs of our community members, especially those who don't feel included, know why they don't feel included. And then we kind of have to get educated. What are the reasons why they don't? What are the reasons why they don't feel part of our wonderful community? And then we have to come up with solutions to help them feel that way. And that is the wonderful thing about our city. I think we have plenty of people who want to be solution-based, to make these people feel welcome, to make everybody feel like they belong here, and to make everybody feel like their voice and their ideas should be included, as they should. And right now, we're in a time where that might not be happening. So the best thing we can do is be listeners, educate ourselves on things, and then come up with possible solutions to make everybody feel welcome in this wonderful town. Thank you.
Candidate Galante.
For diversity, equity, and inclusion to really succeed, it needs to be internalized. And a couple of the ways to have that happen would be through education, but also through promotion. For example, you know, the city has a great partnership with the St. Charles Business Alliance, and I'm sure that they would be able to help out with promotional activities and that sort of thing regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, and include that within city communications and within marketing promotions as well. Thank you.
Candidate Luntke.
It's, community involvement is for all the community as well. As touched on by the others, there are possibilities in terms of Park District and Library and the theaters to include and make people feel that they are included. When you see them there, even shopping, say hi to folks. And generally, we want to present a favorable home environment to people. But it is also the possibility that in the residential developments, that to the extent that we can have what we call single-family attached housing, that's an element of the housing mix, that could help us and appeal to people as starter homes. And likewise, I've mentioned before, the housing fund that's available to rehabilitate downtown, some of the older buildings in town. All of those allow new people come from anywhere to help us build what is St. Charles.
Thank you. Candidate Muntz.
I love hearing that everybody has really good ideas about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and belonging, because belonging is what's really important in that statement, having people feel like they belong where they are. It's a difficult concept to explain to people. Being in HR, it's something that we spend a lot of time trying to educate people on. And I think that just being neighborly is a hard concept to explain to people. But what Jessica said about having places for people to live is important. And having those people in your community, having them with your children, and being educated with your children, having them as part of your community is important. I think that having partnerships with other municipal organizations, so being part of the school, part of the Park District, part of the library programming, and doing community involvement activities to get people together and being out together is important. We've lost a bit of the community square, and I think First Street is a great place for that to happen.
Thank you.
I think it's important that we start by educating our staff and our city council about diversity and inclusion. Communities, as everyone is saying, are enriched when diversity of thought and opinions are welcomed. You know, we have a council that's nine men and one woman, and the woman is retiring. So I think having a balanced representation on the council will give us the opportunity to gain a broader perspective in the community. But I also believe that diversity of income is a significant factor. It's, everyone should be made to feel welcome in St. Charles regardless of their income or their status in the community. You know, we tend to focus on our differences, and we need to be more aware of focusing on our similarities, what we have in common, and then talk about our differences.
Thank you. Candidate Petrowa.
Yes, I think that inclusion really begins with transparency. So I do, you know, as we become more transparent... So, I do, you know, as we become more transparent, for instance, we are discussing in council about putting in a camera, for instance, in the city council chambers. I think that's a great idea. It welcomes people's involvement. It actually includes them in our proceedings. I think also affordable housing, to Jessica's point, certainly that's very important. I think St. Charles, again, is a leader in doing that. So, I support those efforts as a former housing commissioner. And again, as we become, you know, actually speak louder than words. So, we show that we're open, that we're welcoming. We want people to participate in our government, in our decision-making. That just creates a culture of inclusion, and it's good for the city, of course.
This will be your last question. You've survived.
So far.
So far. If elected or reelected, as the case may be, how would you measure if you were a successful council member at the end of your first term? And exactly, candidate Folds, we'll start with you.
I think one way to look at it, again, would be from the feedback I'd get from not only the people in my ward through the use of emails, phone calls, social media, but also from the people in the city. Because yes, we do serve the people in our ward first and foremost, but also our community members. And I think the conversations we have would go a long way in doing that. I think, it's tough to project, you always want to project how that might look. But I think we're going to have to look at the record of what comes, what's thrown at us and how we respond to it, and then how the community responds to it. And hopefully, the decisions we make and that we're a part of will be positive for the community. And hopefully, four years from now, be up maybe in the same situation. And I could say, we've done these things, and St. Charles is moving in the right direction. It's been very successful to this point. So, that's kind of what my hope is, and I'm looking forward to having that opportunity. Thank you.
Candidate Galante.
So, we'd start with community feedback because the community would let you know whether you even had a chance of being reelected or if they would want you to actually run again. So, that would be the first one. Second off, of course, would be whether you could be reelected. The other thing, though, would be, would you be able to point to something that you, in your role on council, that you helped get through the city council? Something that could be pointed to in terms of concrete, in terms of development, in terms of services and that sort of thing? And were you able to lead the city fiscally better than you came to it?
Thank you. Candidate Lunkie.
Yes, some of those individual things. For example, in an earlier term, I was able to have the city talk to the Union Pacific about using their bridge, which was abandoned, using it as a bike bridge. Likewise, talking to city staff to say, does it make sense to make the three-deck parking have a resemblance to the front of the Arcata Theater? And that rang a bell, and that worked with them. But in terms of the general public, what I like to see, and I still enjoy this, is when I see better turnout at the polls, when I see people showing up at the vote mobile, which is convenient. And don't we do that more often? Do we do more early voting? Do they care about some of the other positions in town? Do they, are they, do they like the idea of getting a sample ballot, seeing the Park District, the school, and the library people as a good reason to show up and vote?
Thank you. Candidate Muntz.
I think the measure of success would be a few different things. One is, do people know who I am in my ward? Am I a recognizable face because I'm out there in the community talking to people? Are the things that I have done in that time, things that I believe in? Have I championed causes that I feel are important, that the people in the community feel are important? And have I stuck to my values? And, you know, have I been transparent and done the things that I have come here to do, that I talked to you today about? You know, have I brought forth those values and the things that I believe in?
Candidate Muntz.
Have I taken care of the things that were important to my constituents? Have I helped to solve problems in the ward? Have I represented the ward in the way that they would like me to represent them on the council? I also know that each ward is not an island, and that we have to have an eye toward the entire community. And have I set goals at the beginning of my term and evaluated them annually to measure whether or not I'm making progress around the things that I committed to, as well as the things that are important to our city?
Candidate Pachala.
I actually am lucky as the incumbent that you have a big indicator of my success coming up on April 4th. So, as, you know, when reelected, you know, I obviously, that's indicating to me that I'm successful. To Tom's point, you know, I do think I do have examples of responsiveness to my constituency. I've defended them and represented them regarding several development opportunities that have occurred in my ward that, you know, were a little bit not popular. And I think I have a record of collaboration where I've worked with the residents and the developers. So, I think those are successful indicators. Certainly, anecdotally, receiving feedback from the residents is important. Certainly, not everybody's happy, but in my own case, I am very happy with the constant communication I have with my residents. And it has indicated to me that they're pleased with my representation of them on city council.
And candidate Bridges.
So, yes, community feedback is going to be very important, determining whether or not I'm successful if I get elected as city councilperson. But as a scientist, I am good at identifying problems, coming up with solutions, and acting on them for quantifiable results. So, for this campaign, I do have goals. And if elected as alderperson at the end of four years, I should be able to answer these questions well. That's, did I do everything I can to prevent property taxes and prevent an increased burden on working families? Did I redevelop the Eastern Gateway? And did I do everything I could to get community input so that we all are moving forward together on the police station redevelopment? Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for your closing statements. Once again, I'll ask you to stand so that I can associate a name and a face. And we will begin with candidate Galante, who is a candidate for Ward 1.
Thank you. Ultimately, it's about being an advocate for the quality of life of our residents, be it on the east side or throughout the city of St. Charles. And we do that with community input, by being fiscally responsible, by supporting smart and responsible development that will fund our services, including the upgrading of our infrastructure, our streets, our water. We do that by having a clean, accessible, and beautiful river for our residents and our visitors. And then we also end up with a transparent and answerable government to its residents. And so, I'm going to finish up with a couple of numbers here. I hope that you all will vote on April 4th. I ask for your vote in Ward 1. Thank you.
Candidate Lunkie, candidate for city council from Ward 2.
Art Lunkie, for city council for Ward 2. I have 20 years of experience already doing this, and experience in government on a daily basis. I will follow up on the opportunities that we have right now, especially with the East Gateway development, an additional automotive nameplate next to the McGrath, a backfill of the McGrath site. Those things help in terms of retail, if not just the sale, it's the service after the sale. Automotive service helps us keep property taxes low. And these type of things are a balance that absorbs some of the taxes that the residents would otherwise absorb. At Charlestown Mall and Housewise, the police station, first, do no harm. Don't ruin the existing businesses at Charlestown Mall with one of these developments. So, in the bottom line, I do this because I care, and I like to hear all points of view in my council experience.
Thank you. Candidate Muntz, your closing statement.
Thank you.
From Ward 2.
Yes, thank you. What I hope you remember about me is that I come prepared with an open mind. I am ready to work hard. I believe in good governance, good governance with, and encourage engagement and respect between council and residents, value different perspectives. I am highly motivated, I'm diligent, I have a reputation for getting things done. And people consider me to be a good listener who makes thoughtful and informed decisions. I believe community engagement is important, and so is strategic and responsible planning. St. Charles is my home, and I want to serve my community. I hope that you all come out and vote. Early voting starts March 10th before you can come on April 4th. Thank you.
Candidate Mode, a candidate for alderman from Ward 4.
I bring positivity to this role, not an agenda. I believe we need to have a council that can find common ground and learn to work together. When we have a divided council with obstructionist, it's unproductive, and it doesn't move the community forward, it moves us backward. I intend to work with staff and the experts to learn and to make good business decisions for this community and have respectful and open dialogue with both of my constituents as well as my colleagues so that we can work together collaboratively to find consensus. We have a lot of work to do here, and we have such a wonderful, vibrant community. And I sense and I see that there's not always a willingness to talk to one another and to work together to get things done. I believe that I'm that person that can bring that, that can facilitate that with our city council. I'm Laurel Mode, please vote for me on April 4th.
Candidate Pachala, also a candidate for alderperson, Ward 4.
I'm David Pachala, I'm the current alderman from fourth ward. I think I have a, I'm running again because I do have a proven record of collaborating and working with my constituents. I'm a little bit hesitant to misclassify this division with just a little bit of health disagreement. I'm not afraid to say no, I do have an independent streak, my record indicates that. And I think it's actually a good thing that the city council's not necessarily always voting yes together. I think we need to have some independent thinkers. I'm one of those thinkers, and I ask for your vote on April 4th. Thank you.
Candidate Bridges, a candidate for alderperson, Ward 1.
So, now is my chance, I can thank the League of Women Voters for having this candidate forum, and thank everybody so much for showing up. So, final words about me, I am a fast learner, a hard worker, and a great listener. I look forward to going out knocking on doors and talking to everybody in my ward that I possibly can. And if I can't get to you in time, please feel free to reach out to me. I don't mind getting yelled at, but I do look forward to talking with all of you, and I hope that you'll choose me to represent you in city council on April 4th. And I'm asking for your vote. Thank you so much.
And candidate Folds, another candidate for Ward 1.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming today, taking out part of your Sunday to be here. I love living here. I think it's a great place to live. I think it's a great place to raise a family. I am honored every day to be a teacher in this district. I'm honored every day to stand in front of students and impact their lives. I'm honored to be able to be a coach in this district and be able to coach kids in activities and things they love. I know I bring leadership to this position. I know I bring accountability. I know I'm a problem solver, and I can use the leadership I have in the classroom as an award-winning coach on the athletic field to go into city council and help them make tough decisions. I look forward to that opportunity. I'm the third generation here. I look forward to being a part of city council. Thank you, guys, all for being here. Please vote for me on April 4th.
Please join me in thanking the Let's get her around a little bit.
Thank you. Look at the time, we did it! Thank you, everybody, for attending today and for watching from home. This was our fourth and our largest forum. Thanks for giving us your Sunday. Our fifth and final forum is scheduled to be held on March 13th at the Batavia Public Library for their school district referendum. Thanks again to Andrew Van Meter and Audrey Carr from BATV for the broadcasting of this forum, to our wonderful moderators, to our guests from the AAUW and the St. Charles East National Honor Society. A very big thank you to the St. Charles Library for the use of the Huntley Community Room, and to all of our league members, our league volunteers who helped make today a big success. Please check the KaneCountyClerk.org for early voting details, the IllinoisVoterGuide.org to research your ballot, and remember that Election Day is on the April 4th. If you enjoyed today, please join us. We need help, we always want to get more members. Thank you very much, and have a good night.